Get out and tell your ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Councilway tonight. Time is now five thirty. Board of Deans, we will shut the gates all the way. We will call meetings before this time. We'll have a presentation led by Councilwoman Smith all about the political leaders.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, just thanking you for your grace and your mercy, Father God. Father God, we ask you, Lord, that we have a conducted prayer meeting, Lord, and bless everyone who took out the time to come here, Lord, and bless those who wanted to come, Lord, but didn't have a right. Father God, we just want to continue to lift them up. New focus city of Bogalusa, Father God. Father God, we ask a special blessing of all our merit this time, Lord. Bless him and his family, Lord. And Father God, bless all the candidates that took their time out, Lord, to just try to make a difference, Lord. And Father God, we thank you, Lord, for the season that you have us in, Lord. And Jesus may be praised. Amen.
Our political leaders, students of the United States of America, and truly representative of which is Kansas. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Now, over to all, please.
Vice President Douglas?
Here.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
Councilwoman Kate?
Here.
Councilwoman Keys?
Here.
Councilwoman Temples?
Here.
President Callis?
Here.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Here.
Thank you. And now I would call for the approval of a minutes' hail on the vote booth for council meeting on September night's day. Well, now, uh, well, for all coffee.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Douglas? Vice President Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
President Callis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
Now, I'd like to say that we didn't have a meeting October third, twenty twenty-three. We didn't have a motion to accept the fact that we didn't have a motion. I mean, we didn't have a meeting on third of October.
So...
Six.
Well, now, over to all, please.
Vice President Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
President Callis?
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin?
Aye.
We don't have any recognition of awards tonight. Nor do we have, nor do we have adoption of the resolution. Nor do we have any introduction of awards tonight. Public hearing and adoption of awards is none tonight. But we will call for public participation for immediate action. This meeting at the City Council is now closed. It will now belong to our public participation. First person to check up, Mr. Preston.
My question. Uh, my name's Yvette Preston. I'm at six forty-one St. Augustine Street. Uh, we didn't have a meeting as we stated the last time, and I wanted to bring it up at that time. But my neighbor called and reported shots fired in our neighborhood right next to us. We stood out there for two hours waiting for police to come. She left her name, address, phone number, and no one ever showed up. So I told her, I don't know what the phone call is when you call the police station and reporting shots fired in your neighborhood. But I thought that was totally unacceptable, and I waited out there with her for two hours. So I noted it shot. Uh, and my other issue was, uh, some issues with the polling locations. Some of the polling locations didn't have the right address. Some of the people showed up, say, for instance, Buggaloo South High School. Were told to go to the girls' gym. Their names weren't found. They told them to go to the boys' gym. Went to the boys' gym. Even the poll worker, even after I showed her what district I was in, she didn't even know what District four one A is. It, it, it just so happened to be two little old ladies there and asking my address and told me exactly where to go. And we, I gave elderly people rights too, and they tend to give up when they've been sent here and told, "You're not gonna live. Go here, and you're not gonna live." A lot of elderly people just get up by that point. Me personally, since it's my first year voting here, I wasn't gonna give up. And I ended up, the two little old ladies, she said, "Go to the St. Joseph Church. That's where your district is." Because the poll worker didn't even know what District four one A was. So those were, yeah, at St. Paul, St. Paul's Church, yes. And I, like I said, it's my first time. I wasn't gonna give up on not going to vote. But I wanted it to be aware to the council, "You have locations that are old and outdated, and these people are going there, and their name is not showing up, and they're getting discouraged in the voting process." So those are my two main issues. I really don't have anything else. But I really wanted to bring it to the council's attention, those things that I was aware of. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for not giving up.
I can't just say that we'll check with the voter registration. There's no problem with the county.
To make you know what are...
And the other thing is, that time you called the police department, they don't respond to the county matter. Call back or call your local, like, one of your council partners, Council Board, or whoever's in your district. Call them and tell them what's going on.
'Cause it's mostly elderly people where I live.
Just came out after that third, and that day where you called and speak with the, uh, chief of patrol. And before you complain to them, saying, "Have that ball that complaint," and that will be addressed to Ross, uh, in the council. And I thank you for doing that, though. We appreciate you. That is something that needs to get done.
And I would like to say, Mr. Preston, um, I believe we may have exchanged numbers. Okay, please, please don't hesitate. Give me a call. Uh, I believe within two hours, almost, take two hours to approach. Why am I not sure, you know, what they have? And then on your polling location, if you, as you indicated, your own protocol is, is the, the listener that's in charge, if the polling office doesn't know, they usually call and check with, uh, Johnny Frank Jr., which is our central court. And they add, add Mr. Strickland, uh, which is the registrar of voting. Or you could check myself. I purchased a form for list to see exactly, you know, where individuals may have... I apologize for that, for that happening with you and, uh, the ladies that do the transport.
Thank you, President. Councilwoman Kate. Next, we have Mr. Nettie McHale.
Deputy of four fourteen Mississippi Avenue. Um, I had kind of the same experience with the poll commissioner not being very responsive. Um, so, but as they said, Paul, um, the per report will, will resolve issues if nothing else is resolved. But it's also up to us. You can check your voter registration and your polling location very easily just by going to vote G E A U X V O T E and putting your name, and it will tell you your polling location and will tell you your ballot and everything else you know, and give you a reminder about, uh, voting. So, uh, again, G E A U X V O T E. Just type it in, and it will pop up on your phone, put in your information, and it will tell you the correct one. Now, there is a problem. They removed, moved a whole lot of polling locations, and I know that they sent out cards to everybody, but everybody may not have gotten them. So before you vote, it's really critical that you take a minute and verify your voting location. And that's one of the most essential things you can do is check and make sure you know where you're going. Um, I heard reports that people were going to the vote act because they had voted there for early voting and assumed that it would be the same on Election Day. And again, it's really critical that you know where you're supposed to be, and that's kind of your responsibility. And it doesn't take more than two minutes to type and go vote and check your registration. And it's also good to check your registration. And the last thing is, if for some reason you can't get it resolved, you always have the right to ask for provisional ballots. You do not have to walk out of a polling location without the option to vote, ever. If you think that you have a right to vote and they're denying you that right, you go and say, "I want provisional ballot," and they have to give you one. Your vote won't count until all the other votes are counted, but they will go back and review it if, if the numbers are such that it's a close race. Okay, so you always have that right. Um, speaking of which, and hopefully you can see this, uh, the election, early voting starts October twelfth. Everybody can see that? Twenty-sixth? Huh? Twenty-sixth.
No, Sam, it's twenty-sixth, I'm gonna tell you. October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth is, is the, is early voting. Early voting, okay? Uh, and this is a little planning guide that I'm going to post on the Mindsite, but, um, maybe somebody else wants to take a picture of it and post it too. And it kind of reminds you about those steps that you need to take, which is taking your voter registration, making sure you know where to vote and all that stuff, encouraging people to vote with you. We had eleven people in four, five D. Only eleven people voted. Only eleven people voted. Councilpeople, you need to get your people out to vote, you know? It's not the market when eleven people are going to determine who is going to represent them or find constitutional limits. That means it's eleven people made a decision for that whole precinct about what was going to be in Louisiana's constitution. So, you know, we have to take care of ourselves. We have to protect our democracy. And that means everybody has to get up, get the information, and vote. There are millions of resources. If you can't figure it out, talk to Gloria, talk to one of the council people, talk to me, anybody, and find out what we need to know in order to be able to vote effectively. Um, I'm gonna talk about the declarations outside. They're lovely. But we have a lot of old people who have difficulty walking and making them walk around, get up to the stairs, and the handrails is really not a good idea. I think it's separated so people can go directly up to the handrails. That would be really helpful. Um, last two are a little less nice. Um, I would like to know what, what the decision was last time to not allow, to not have a council meeting given that somebody here all the way from Hammond here to speak and found out it was canceled. So I'm not real happy about that. And, um, I guess that's it. Go vote.
Thank you for that, Ms. Douglas. Be careful for your day about that, please. Yeah, I'll have to.
Yeah.
I'd like to, uh, I'll have to figure it out for us.
I have one. You guys can keep it. I don't have one.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you. Next, we have Ms. Ladd Swankin.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Ladd Swankin, nineteen fifteen, Roseboro, Maine. Um, my concern is, I've, I've been passing this for you, for years, and it keeps slipping my mind until I get to it again. I want to know how, uh, whose soul gave Delta Printing a whole street? They took a whole street where we used to turn and go to Sec, to Martin Luther King. There is no street there anymore. They got that for themselves. And, um, over here, by Sears and Roebuck, where Sears used to be, I was told that Temple Inland owns that street now? Now, how can a street be given to a company, to, to companies and, and this city doesn't know, well, not the city doesn't know anything about it, but the, the people in the city doesn't know anything about it? But how can, uh, Temple Inland own that street right at the red light by the post office in Sears? I was told that they own that street now. That's why it has no work been done on it, I was told that. And I know that Delta Printing has taken the side street where their, their, their store is, has took, taken that street and extended their business, cut that street off. So I don't understand how, uh, companies can just take over a street and nobody knows anything about it. That's, that's one of my, that's my concern. And, um, that, that baffles me. That really baffles me. Mr. Mary, I know you don't know anything about this, 'cause it's happened way before you came. But Sears and Roebuck, I mean, IP has the whole street from that red light to your left going into the plant. They own, some, I was told that, they own that now. They own that. That's why it's, they never fixed the street. I was told that. And I know that Delta Printing took over a street. How can you just take over a street and extend your business? And you can't, nobody can turn there. You know what I'm saying? We used to turn off right, right down by Delta Printing, but they have taken that whole street and extended their business.
Uh, we're about to find out more for, um, to make it better, but that rather Buggaloo Street, you know, was given the name of, saying that. They actually had, um... Yes, they actually had, had it paved themselves, um, so that their trucks would be able to pull up to bring their supplies in. It was always a part of their property.
The street was their property?
You are absolutely correct. We used to be able to turn down there, but to get more valid, it never was a street that Buggaloo's owned to make it a street. It was always for them to turn for their, um, company trucks to come in. So what they did was just took and added on, extended their building and closed it off. But I was told it never was part of Buggaloo's street.
It was a street.
Do you know the name of it?
I know the name. I did, I did. It was a street.
But the name for it.
I, I can address that. It is in District eight. Once upon a time, it was First Street. First Street. And, uh, Delta Printing did extend, as Councilwoman Smith indicated, we have to, you know, check to see exactly how they, you know, acquired that, acquired that part of the, you know, those streets. But it was First Street. And, you know, you have Second Street, a street over, yes. Yeah, that was First Street because it turned right, right down the side of Delta Printing. Go on to, um, Martin Luther King. And go take, go anyway, but they, it's not there anymore.
Yeah, I was told that it wasn't a street, that they always, um, I should just sort of, I don't wanna say the man missed the passer, that they out, they brought that whole to a certain part, that whole block, is what I was told. So, um...
It was done about ten years ago. Right. Yeah, because it's another, uh, Asian street, like going, like coming across Willis Avenue. You can turn and go around in front of them. One more thing, um, thank you, Mr. Mary. I appreciate you for the work that you're doing. I didn't mean to point my pen at you, but thank you for the work you're doing, uh, all of you on the streets. It's very much appreciated, and we appreciate you for the hard work that you, you're bringing in doing.
Thank you, Ladd. Thank you, Farrell.
Thank you, Farrell, nineteen thirty-one B with place. I have a concern about the street over by, what, this, I just got to be speaking about, by the stadium. Uh, I thank you, councilmen, to get together and go talk to the paper mill about getting that street fixed, because it's ridiculous, all that dust around there, and the people got businesses over there. And the state of the riches, when you set on dust, it'd just be so thick. That's really sad, but we got to have a kind of condition of revolution. So we all need to get together, wake up, and let's have a meeting with the media. That's my, that's my opinion. And another thing, I don't like the way citizens are not taking care of that property. I look, it's sort of dry. I, I see a building that torn down, been laying up at the longest. Don't make any sense to me. It really don't. Words of pride in Bogalusa. I'm asking you, council, to get a, 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 a tablet and take names of different things in y'all area that need to be cleaned up. I got out and took a tablet and went out and run down to the addresses that need to be cleaned up. I'm asking you all to join me, because it takes more than just those code enforcement to get this straightened out. It gonna take everybody. So let's, let's join in and, and do, let's help the code, the cleaning, the setting up in America. We need to do that. And, uh, another thing, in this election, I know that some of the candidate, candidate's name wasn't even on the ballot. Yeah, I did. That, that don't make no sense either. It's somebody's responsibility to check the machines to make sure everybody's name is on the ballot. And it didn't happen. This go around. So let's check it next time around, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Farrell, that property on Sullivan you were talking about? We're in the process of getting a dumpster. They need a roll-off, and Coastal do not have roll-offs in Bogalusa. They're trying to work on getting a roll-off up here to get that property.
Everything here a little too slow for me. Definitely a little too slow. 'Cause this, I've been living at this for the longest when I passed down Sullivan Drive every day. It don't make any sense to me.
I personally...
I don't believe, I do not believe if that was me had something in, I like that, I think everybody in Bogalusa would be on it. It depends how I feel about it.
What block is that in, Mr. Farrell? What block is Sullivan?
It's close to that service station, um, Sullivan Drive.
But Coastal is in the process of trying to get some type of dumpster up here for she needs to get that property.
Right?
Coastal. I made calls to Coastal. I talked to Coastal, and they don't have roll-offs up here.
Well, what about, what about like, uh, a big given D guy that got these dump trucks and these lift machines? They, they, they know it's stupid and stuff to stay there.
Well, I made calls to Coastal, and I'm waiting for Coastal to call me back to tell me what can they have brought here for that property to be...
What about the homeowner? The two, he's on some...
The homeowner may get called.
Hey, we gotta wake up and get, and get the ball moving, 'cause the ball is not moving in Bogalusa.
Ball is moving, I'm just waiting for Coastal.
It's moving too slow.
But you have to get on Coastal.
Another, another suggestion, uh, would be, now, I suggest that this, you know, to homeowners, Councilwoman, uh, they, if they have a trailer, if they have a truck, uh, if they have, uh, whatever could transport that, uh, that piece of debris to the landfill. The landfill is open to like four o'clock, and I tell people to, to transact that, assist people to put stuff on the back of our trailer and take it to the landfill. I'm not sure how much, you know, how much it is to be moved, but they can take it to the landfill as long as they have a valid driver's license. You know, that's just, that's...
This trailer...
The, the, the Sullivan landfill.
And one thing, I would like to see the homeowners, when they, when they get told to clean that property up, clean it up, right? Don't have it cleaned up. That's what I see them, the homeowner doing. They have said it. So we, we need to clean up where he leaves. Please, I wish I don't get working with the man.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Christian Smith.
I'm good.
Christian, it's going to be our, we need to participate. I now ask for Administrator Mark.
Good evening, everybody. Um, first off, I want to say congratulations to all the candidates that got elected. Um, congratulations to those who made the runoff, including our city attorney. Um, crime cameras are up, and we are already writing citations for litter. We've already caught people litter. Um, Church Street is being repaved right now. Uh, we've had to reschedule the river cutting due to parish delays. Uh, but they are doing a great job. If you haven't been over there, I hope you'll come out to the river cutting as we unveil our, the administration's five-year plan for populace. Uh, we've secured buildings from developers to build, uh, more affordable housing, modern housing, um, using the latest standards. It's something that we should be proud of in Bogalusa. Uh, so the new date will be coming soon. Monday, October twenty-third, ten a.m., we'll have people from all over the state here at City Hall with the USDA and their state director, as well as representatives from our Congresswoman's office for a media day to celebrate my administration's receiving over three hundred thousand dollars of funds to repaint our central business district. Uh, so that's gonna be a celebratory event with people, with guests from all over. This is a chance for us to highlight Bogalusa and the good things that we have going. Maybe our park playground equipment will start arriving tomorrow to address some of our citizens' concerns. I have, my team has met with the mill. They don't wanna play ball. And, you know, I'm all for local business, but local business has to be for the city. You know, uh, we have pressed them. If you, if you don't know, we've already committed to not mowing Willis Avenue anymore. The city doesn't own it. That is the mill's property, and we've just been mowing it as a courtesy to them. So when you see it grow up, don't blame the city. Uh, we've already gotten in touch with them about that. Um, concerning that road, that road does still belong to the city, but I'm just gonna be honest with you, as long as I sit in this seat, I will not spend any public resources on that road. Because mill has to play fair. They have to pay their fair share. And if you cannot do that, then I don't know what to tell you. Um, last year, the council didn't, um, vote to approve an ITAP tax on them. That's, that's something that the state gives the, the local jurisdictions control over. We declined. They, they tried to say, "Oh, if y'all raise it, or if you approve it, then we're gonna leave." Ladies and gentlemen, that mill isn't going anywhere. You just can't go and build, brand new, anywhere else right now. Our mills will cut you down. Feds don't play about pollution and corporations right now, so don't buy that argument that they're gonna leave it. We taxed that. They need to pay more. Um, also, we have cracked down code enforcement. We added to the code enforcement team. They're not writing citations, but with everything else in government, you need at least two branches to work together. So I can write the citations all day, but when they get to court, they get extensions, they get every other excuse in the book, and nothing is ever done with them. So, hey, we're trying. Um, last but not least, I would like to wish everyone a safe, enjoyable, fair... So, hey, we're trying. Um, last but not least, I would like to wish everyone a safe, enjoyable, spare week. At this time, I'd like to ask for confirmation for members of Christmas in the Park Commission, as well as additions to the Parks Recreation and Culture Commission. Thank you.
We have a motion. All the, uh, sections of the application for Christmas in the park.
I make a motion that we proceed with the, uh, the gains to, uh, accept those conditions that are presented in Bogalusa.
Um, first up for Christmas in the Park, we have Ms. Jennifer Stevenson. Um, she, she left, uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission to help us out with Christmas in the park.
I have a motion that we accept, Ms. Jennifer Stevenson.
I say it. I say it.
Anybody, any lady from here, or any gentleman here, anyone in here, please? Any public discussion on this matter? Any, any, a couple of others that come up, it's, uh, Ms. Jennifer Stevenson, Governor Fordham now. If any, now the county discussion on this Stevenson.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer, for all that you do. Sorry, you from one report hit to the next, but your work is well done and very organized, organized and always willing to lend a helping hand, so we do appreciate you, Ms. Jennifer.
Thank you, Flattie. Any other county discussion? God bless both of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Councilman Irvin?
Aye.
Next up, we have.
Uh, Ms. Miranda Smith.
I make a motion that we accept, Ms. Miranda Smith.
Any public discussion on this bit? If there ain't no public discussion on this bit, we have a county discussion on this bit.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda, for joining the board. Um, she's got been also to the middle school. She keeps her very creative, very helpful, outgoing. Um, she's been poetic. Bogalusa City Schools, so, so, yes, and thank you for joining, Ms. Miranda.
Thank you, Flattie. God bless, all of y'all, please. Any other county discussion? If there ain't none, go ahead, all of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have Ms. Deborah Young.
I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, celebrate young.
Have a second.
Um, Ms. Deborah Young, she's been with the District Eight and, uh, and she's been working for years with the Blessing Boxes. Uh, I recall her and her sister coming forth and invited them to come to the council to share, uh, their, their reasons, which is very beneficial to, uh, to the city of Bogalusa. So I think she'll be well with, uh, uh, Christmas in the park. She did assist me at one point with, uh, a distributed Christmas giveaway. And, uh, one of the first ones and back to school supplies as well, so I think she'll be good.
Any public discussion on this John? If there ain't no, the council, further council discussion on this one? Go ahead, all of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Councilman Irvin?
Aye.
Next up, we have Ms. Kelly Daniels. She is the owner of six, she is the owner of Sweet Sensations. Uh, she makes baked goods.
Do we have any public discussion on this Daniels? If there ain't no public discussion, then we have a county discussion. If there ain't no county discussion, go ahead, all of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Councilman Irvin?
Aye.
Next up is Ms. Jasmine Bruster.
Any public discussion on this Jasmine Bruster? If there ain't no county, no public discussion, then county discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Jasmine, for, um, joining us for, uh, for the Christmas in the park. And she's been, she's always coming up with ideas to help the city, especially for the kids, different activities.
Any other discussion, county, if there ain't no other discussion, go ahead, all of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Councilman Irvin?
Aye.
Next up, we have Ms. Quintisha Bayham.
Any public discussion on this lady?
Thank you.
Lady. Yes, thank you. No, uh, no, uh, discussion, any county discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Bayham, for joining the team, Christmas in the park. Um, she's, she's young, she's, um, just getting involved in her city, so we do appreciate her for stepping up. One second.
And, and she does contribute her vision for the city, to beautify the city, so we need one, a place to have that, uh, that type of vision. Beautify the park. Smile, I'll say.
Uh, Ms. Kiantra Vickel.
Go ahead, all of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Aye.
We got one more, Ms. Kiantra Vickel.
That's a baby. Kiantra Vickel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Second.
Now, Marshall, let me have a second on this Vickel. Kiantra Vickel, is there any discussion about the public on this Vickel? If there ain't no discussion about the public, is there any discussion about the council?
Thank you, Ms. Kiantra Vickel. Um, she's a lovely young lady who's getting involved in her community and actually is, um, very sweet personality. And go down to the waterworks, support me, always have a warm, warmest smile. So we appreciate you, Ms. Vickel.
Thank you, Flattie. Go ahead, all of y'all, please. Any other discussion?
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next commission is Parks and Rec. Uh, we have three additions, starting off with Ms. Brandy Vickel.
Motion. Have a second.
I make a motion, second, discussion about the public. If there's no discussion about the public, if there's discussion about the public, is there any discussion about the council? No discussion about the county, I don't, I have to go ahead, all of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Councilman Irvin?
Aye.
Next up, we have Ms. Cheyenne Foster.
Ms. Cheyenne Foster, is there any discussion about the public on this Cheyenne Foster? Mark, is there anybody giving any discussion about the council?
I just see that Ms. Foster has indicated that she has helped and volunteered in the past, so that's a way that she's willing to, to join the team. Some practice.
Thank you, Flattie. Any other discussion about the council or this public? If there ain't no further discussion, uh, go ahead, all of y'all.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Yeah, aye.
Councilman Irvin?
Aye.
All right, and last but not least, Ms. Lauren Singling.
Second. Go ahead, all of y'all, please. I mean, any public discussion on this all?
Same words.
Yes, Brandy?
No.
Well, I would just like to say, um, thank you to all the ladies that have stepped up and become a Parks and Rec, um, commission. Um, thank y'all for just taking the time out to help the city go forward and volunteer. Um, as we know, volunteers do not get paid and they're taking time away from their family. So I definitely, um, like to just continue to thank them and encourage these ladies. And I notice, um, if Mr. Mayor doesn't know, like Ms. Vickel, she really can cook, Karen. She's an excellent baker too, so, um, you have the opportunity when she's doing her little small sales, let's get out and try to support her. Because this what keeps the younger generation encouraged, um, if we're supporting them at a smaller level, to know that they're able to grow bigger and better and that the citizens of Bogalusa will support them. So, thank y'all ladies for just stepping up.
You always gotta have a good cook.
Yes.
I want to thank everyone for volunteering. It's greatly appreciated to the services of the city and to helping it grow.
And I would also like to continue to say, um, the senior, um, on her, uh, application, she indicates as far as, um, her experience, she doesn't have any experience, but she's a fast learner and she's great with people. So it takes, uh, those individuals that are good with people. You have to be a person in order to regain profit.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flattie. Ms. Singling, physical address or the application, if you go down her email address. I was just wondering if we got physical address on her.
Um, so I believe she lives in District Eight, uh, but I'll have to double check that, but I know she is a resident of Bogalusa.
Thank you, Flattie. There any public discussion on this thing? If there ain't no public discussion, then county discussion on this thing. If there ain't no further discussion over her, go ahead, all of y'all, please.
Vice President Douglas? Aye. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Councilman Irvin?
Aye.
Right, that's the clear proportion of the members played in the law. Uh, just like the government board, they're listening to watch, gonna get ready, see if we can get a, get an opportunity to give it to those mentioned tonight. Is there any county discussion? I want to give up to Mark Erber.
I want to thank everyone for coming. Uh, don't forget, we're coming up on Fair Week. Just let's pray for a good week. I know it's gonna be some nice weather coming up, so it's gonna make you a perfect opportunity. And don't forget, we got some, uh, we got a lot of fairs and, uh, a lot of things around the city that's gonna be happening towards the end of the month. Just keep up the pace, look, there're gonna be things on the city side and stuff like that. I don't know exact dates and times yet, but I do know that, uh, there will be things happening in and around, uh, twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty-first. Uh, you know, with the city and other church events, nonprofits, now we do have a nice following events. So don't forget to keep, keep on social media and keep following that, uh, because, uh, I think our, I think this is the last meeting for October. So, and then we'll have another meeting on November the seventh, uh, here at the council meeting. But, uh, don't forget, and like I say, uh, we do have winter months coming up, so do check on your neighbors. But, uh, don't forget, and like I say, uh, we do have winter months coming up, so do check on your neighbors and the people who are, uh, that might need some clothes or need a reader fix or something like that, you know, let's do this in advance. Uh, so, 'cause I've been transiting word out, we could have a rough winter, uh, at least by January. So, thank y'all very much for coming out tonight, uh, but, uh, keep praying for the city, administration, council, public works, it's greatly appreciated. Fire and police department, we appreciate all the hard work the city puts into it. Thank y'all very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Councilman Irvin. I would just like to say, thank everyone for coming out tonight, I appreciate you coming out, giving us your thoughtful, checking in with the situation that you brought before the council. Those who we can help with, if you will, those who we can't, we get back with and put somebody that can, and help you with those. If you happen to go through Franklin or anywhere else, just remember it's dangerous on that highway, it's Nike, especially. Be careful, watch how you travel, and watch the other person, both of them. Just be careful, be safe, mind your own worth. And again, I thank you for coming to keep this council and this city in your favor. Yes, I am. Can I run this out? Ms. Juan, Councilwoman Douglas?
I'd like to say, good evening, thank you everyone for coming out. Um, school is out, so we need to watch out for our children. Uh, the fair is going on, and also, as it was stated to say, uh, the fall festivals are coming up. Kids are gonna be out for that, so we need to watch out for them.
Thank you, Vice President Douglas. Councilwoman Key?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, I just want, uh, we want everyone else seeing, uh, be seen during the fair. And please continue to keep the city administration, council, and the fellow brother in your prayers.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Key. Councilwoman Smith?
Just like it, um, to take this time out once again to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you, Miss Preston, for not giving up the opportunity to be alone and finding out that District Eight were, um, actually supposed to be voting. So I do commend you for that, and for getting involved, for moving back and, um, being a person, go to, get the elderly out to the polls, so that, that means a lot to me. Also, um, I have this elderly lady who lives at sixteen, eighteen, Calum Street. Um, it's over in Mark's District, but, um, I myself and Mark, we have put in several work orders. She's just requesting for some rocks. I did, um, text the mayor about this situation, if we could please just, um, try to give her some rocks, please. She's asking every, every other day, so, you know, at her age, I think we'll be just right to, you know, as the Bible teaches us, to be respectful to our elders. Also, in the Good Year Park, they have two light fixtures now that may be replaced, it looked like one just took and knocked, knocked it off. The other one is just leaning, so if we can get that fixed, I'm quite sure the walkers and the runners and the joggers and Annunciation School, we would definitely appreciate that. Um, remember early voting is October the twenty-sixth, let's get out, get moving. Congratulations to Ms. Lori for taking a week to step forward. And to, um, our attorney, Mr. Kevin May, congratulations for making it to the runoff. It takes a big person just to step up to run for any position. Not to just be a voice, but even if you're not running for a position, we can always be proactive and just get involved with, um, with Bogalusa. Also, congratulations to the kids for the pu- plucky contest. I noticed that we had a first and second and third place winner, so let's congratulate those little kids. Remember that it is Fair Week, um, let's just be safe, um, look out for our neighbors and our friends, and just lend a helping hand, continue to pray for the bereaved families, um, we could be an outdoor today. So wish them, just to continue to pray for the council. We do work hard, um, and sometimes y'all think y'all knocking on the other doors, but we do try to be, um, proactive in everything that we do. And also about that road, I was told that, um, maybe ten years ago, maybe, they bought it from the city and it was no longer a road, but I will check back into that. And, um, just to echo back, um, on what the mayor was saying earlier, um, my first four years sitting here as councilwoman of District Eight, Gloria Keys and Miss Sherry and I went over to talk with, um, the papermen, um, to try to, communicate, just get them involved and, you know, especially for State Avenue, because we all know those big trucks come through there and they tear it up pretty bad. So as he said, you know, sometimes your presence is there, but, you know, people are not willing to work with you. You can keep going and going and going and going and going and going, but sometimes it just lands on their fear itself. But, you know, as he stated, you have to kind of make them have some accountability. Um, and let's just keep each other in prayers, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Irvin. Councilwoman Depple?
Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you, Ms. Clap and Ms. McCloud for the voting information, that was really useful. Um, I hope everyone's enjoying this wonderful weather, it's perfect for the fair, but also remember that we are still correct under a burn ban, so be mindful of that, too. Um, enjoy your week, thank you all for coming.
Before I get to Ms. Keys, I would like to say that Ms. Keys just had a recent birthday, I'm glad she's here. And Ms. Keys, we got one camera up on the table. We want to have a big applause here for Ms. Keys, thank you, Ms. Keys, and that's perfect, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Key?
Good, uh, good evening, everyone, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Appreciate your continued prayers and your comments on tonight. Um, I would like to thank everyone that supported me and, uh, my run for the seat. Thank you so much for your prayers and your encouragement. I would like to also say, um, Ms. Preston, please do not hesitate to call me. Uh, we can follow, we know some of those individuals, we can follow up on the, the voters about them. Uh, Ms. Lafferty, I will be checking out as well, uh, First Street and, uh, the origin of, of the closeout of First Street, uh, right behind Seventh Street. Um, I would also like to say that, um, as far as, uh, IP, as Councilwoman Siff said, we did visit them, and then about two years ago, IP indicated they, they selected, uh, someone from each district, uh, to, for their community, uh, development, it was a, it was a community development, uh, type of, uh, uh, well, they wanted, uh, uh, they wanted someone from each district to participate. So we need to do a follow-up on that, because it opened the community lines for IP. Uh, as far as, um, the taxes, and the mayor, you mentioned something about the taxes for IP. Now, at one point, those taxes should roll off of there and back to the, uh, the city. So I, you know, I would love to know exactly where that particular, uh, project would be, with those taxes rolling off, but they're not, they were no longer a pay. Uh, also, I'll also say, congratulations to, uh, to, uh, our city attorney, uh, City Attorney May, in his runoff. And, uh, best of luck to you. And, uh, council, uh, thank you again for your support, and, uh, that's, that's all my comments, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Key. There's nothing in front of the mic, we will be talking in the future.
Point of origin?
President Douglas?
I have one.
Council, uh, I'd like to wish, uh, a late birthday to Ms. Brenda, that she wished that birthday, that she got that job.
Oh, happy birthday, Ms. Brenda.
Miss, Miss New mentioned the pork, oh, Good Year Pork, Good Year Pork, the lambs are there. And yesterday, I was out walking, it was two women on bicycles coming through, um, riding on bicycles, almost knocked me and another lady down. They just riding through on the bikes, and then there's school, there's rain, there's children over there, and they're just all over the place. They won't let us walk on the track or anything, they just, and we're walking the grass to keep them off this thing.
And that's me, if there's no other...
Point, point of origin, President, um, I would like to also comment, because I got some concerns about, uh, Church Street, and I did speak with the, uh, the maintenance director of the parish, and because of vacations and because of the holidays, and they will be resuming, uh, on Church Street, uh, for what I understand, Monday. And then also, um, I did request a copy, the mayor, the mayor, he mentioned about a plan or, um, a business plan, so I would, if all of us will have to request a copy of the business plan, uh, then we're gonna have one for Populous and one for Central Pearson's, so that's my additional comments, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Face, meeting the governor.